Call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavoni.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. McGurven.
Here.
Ms. Witche.
Here.
Mr. Person.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Mr. Corman. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, one absent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I'd like to excuse the absent council member.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, first up, we have a proclamation for the farmer's market.
Okay. Proclamation, whereas Washington's farmers make an essential contribution to our local communities and to the well-being of our citizens, and whereas the Renton Farmers Market at the Piazza is celebrating its 16th year of operation, open each Tuesday until September 26th from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. in Renton's beautiful downtown Piazza Park, and whereas the Farmer's Market Program in Renton is dedicated to supporting Washington's family farms and to providing opportunities for the citizens of Renton and surrounding communities to meet local producers and gain access to the bounty of Washington-grown products and all their diversity, fresh from the family farm, and whereas the Renton Farmers Market at the Piazza benefits local businesses and contributes to economic vitality by attracting thousands of potential patrons each week, and whereas the Farmer's Market benefits those in need by providing donations to the local food bank, and whereas the congenial atmosphere of the Farmer's Market in Renton appeals to citizens of all ages and ethnic backgrounds, creates a positive social experience, and provides nutritional and economic benefits. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton, do hereby proclaim the week of August 6th through 12th, 2017, to be the Farmer's Market Week in the City of Renton, and I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the many benefits of our local Farmer's Market and witness whereof, I have here on two set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Renton to be affixed this 7th day of August, 2017, signed Dennis Law, Mayor of the City of Renton.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation to be adopted as a red.
Second.
Been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mrs. Witche. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have somebody from the Farmer's Market.
Thank you so much, council members, for all of your support. This is my sixth season of running the Farmer's Market, and each year it just keeps getting better. I brought with two of our fabulous volunteers, Brian Larson, the treasurer for the Piazza Renton Group, and Cheryl Shireman, the president for the Piazza Renton Group.
Well, I guess she's gonna put me on the spot. But anyway, we want to welcome everybody that's here and anybody that's seeing us on the TV to come down tomorrow to the market. Enjoy it. We have a lot of things going on. We have live entertainment at 5:30 to 6:30. The kids patch, bring the kids down. Lot of good things going on in downtown Renton.
Cheryl?
Sure. I just want to say, if you ate today, you can thank a farmer, and the Renton Farmer's Market is especially an amazing market. It's just full of life and celebration, so be sure to come down tomorrow. Eat fresh, buy local, and support the Renton Farmer's Market. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, would it be all right if they took a picture with the council real quickly? Thank you.
The Farmer's Market is actually one of the true treats of downtown, and I know it takes just amazing amount of volunteer hours and coordination to put together, and it's quite a fantastic event every Tuesday, and Renton is a better place for having you in there, so.
Yep.
So next up, we have a special presentation from the Renton Regional Fire Authority, from the chief, Rick.
Good evening, members of the council. Thanks for allowing me to come and speak to you. Believe it or not, July 1st was, we celebrated one year with the Renton Regional Fire Authority as its own entity, and like any new agency, we have certainly seen our share of growing pains and challenges, but there's a lot that we feel extremely proud of, not the least of which is the fact that I truly believe that we have maintained our commitment to be Renton's fire department still, and we work hard every day to continue to foster relationships with the City of Renton and provide first-class service to a first-class city. I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes going through some highlights from 2016 and give you an idea of kind of where things are going from our perspective. The RFA at a glance, we currently have six stations. As you know, we are in the process of building a seventh station that will be up in the north Renton-Kennedale area, and I'll talk about that in just a few minutes. Currently, we have North Battalion, which handles the north side of the city with stations 11, 12, and 16, and the South Battalion with 13, 14, and 17, 17 being the Fire District 40 station in Fairwood. We've got, we currently serve a population of just over 130,000 people, with the majority of that population being within the City of Renton itself. So if we look at responses by station, I thought I would show this to you. Station 11, which is our downtown fire station located at Second and Mill, if you look at all the different stations, you can see that the calls continue to grow in this downtown core fire station. As calls grow, it impacts our ability to respond from that station. We use the term availability, so the more often that a fire unit is on a call, they're not obviously available to handle another call that comes in. So this is something that we're keeping very close eye on, and it's also one of the reasons why I've tasked our staff to work very carefully to develop responses to low-acuity calls. So Station 11 in the downtown area sees a significant number of calls in what we term as low-acuity. Those are really not necessarily true emergency calls, medical emergencies, but calls that involve things like mental health issues, drug dependency issues, sometimes just as simple as a slip, trip, or fall, and they just need some help getting up. So in the next year, we're going to be developing a program and implementing a program to help minimize the impact on emergency crews for those low-acuity calls, and what we're hoping is that we will see trending down then of Station 11's calls. Call type, you can see very clearly here that EMS calls, emergency medical calls, are the majority of our calls, and they're continuing to climb, and again, they're climbing at a higher rate than all the other calls combined. So being able to deal with this in an effective manner is really paramount to our mission over the next year or so. You can see calls by fire type, and what's notable here, I think, you can, the top one there, that's natural vegetation, brush fires. To be honest with you, don't ask me why it's trending down, and we'll see, 2017 right now looks to kind of at least be flat or continuing that trend down for vegetation fires. But what is important to note is that purple line, which are structure fires, and it has been sometimes stated that in this modern era of fire protection where we have sprinkler systems and alarm systems and so forth, that the number of fires are going down, and that's simply not true. As a percentage of total calls, yes, that number is shrinking, but as far as the number of fires that we're going to within the city, we're seeing that increase year over year. And again, the notable here is just that we did roughly 5,000 business inspections as a part of our guarantee to the citizens for forming the RFA to improve service level. We have hired additional deputy fire marshals that go out and do fire inspections, and we're really proud of the work that they're doing and the fact that they are getting into more and more of these businesses and proactively helping them to avoid the losses that occur as a result of fire. In addition, you can see our fire investigations. We had just over 110, 111 total fires for a fire loss of about $3 million last year. Something that I'm really proud of, we acknowledged all these people in a celebration that we have annually back in February of this year, most notably, Justin Cox, who was our EMT of the year, Justin Olney, who was firefighter of the year, Steve Winter, Lieutenant Steve Winter was our officer of the year, and Rhonda Hayden was our civilian of the year. In addition to that, over in the other column, those are awards that are given based on performance for our top companies. So finally, for an update for 2017 to where we're at, Fire Station 15. Currently, Fire Station 15 is on schedule. We still continue to believe that we're going to be occupying that on January of 2019. We are seeing market pressures because of the construction market, and anybody that has to drive around the City of Renton knows just exactly what the impacts of construction are having. Well, they're having impacts on the RFA as well and on the city. The city has guaranteed to build a fire station, that the amount of money was set in the RFA plan, and the city is continuing to work with us to make good on that promise, but we are also seeing an uptick in construction costs and some challenges that we're seeing with just labor, getting things done on time and on budget because of the demands put on by the healthy economy and the pressures there. So we are watching that, and I do want to set expectations that we're doing everything we can, we're currently on schedule, but the market conditions that are out there are one of those things that are a little bit outside of our control. We also just completed the design phase of this, just went, final design went to the architect's end of last week, and one of the things that, again, I'm proud of is that we're making good on our promise, we came before council along with community services back in February to deliver 7,500-square-foot, two-bay satellite station that's going to meet the needs of our community, not just immediately, but for many, many years to come. And then regarding the ILAs, so just as a reminder, we've got interlocal agreements that exist between the Renton Regional Fire Authority and the city. Two of those are coming to an end at the end of this year, and those are for human resources and for finance, and that makes for very busy times on our end, and I think very happy times for a couple of city departments that are having to accommodate us as we make our departure from those services. There are three that currently exist and will continue to go through 2019, that being for fleet, for fleet maintenance, facilities and our facilities maintenance, and then for IT. So we continue to work with all of those departments and have been extremely impressed with the amount of support that we're getting from every city department to help us, again, to deliver services to our community, recognizing that to them, there's not much of a difference between the Regional Fire Authority and the City of Renton. We're there, government here to serve them. And finally, just Fire Department Headquarters, I'd like to remind people, because every now and then I meet people in the hall and they say, "Well, oh, you guys are still here." Is that, yes, we are still here, and we have an agreement to be with the, in City Hall through 2018. At the end of that time, it's still uncertain what we're going to be doing. We're looking at a couple of possibilities, really with the primary goal of really trying to reduce costs. So there are lots of advantages for us to stay within City Hall and to continue to work closely with the City of Renton. That will, at the end of 2018, require some type of lease agreement, and so we're also looking at possibly moving our headquarters to one of the facilities that we currently own, one of the fire stations, and doing some work there so that we can have a fire headquarters without having to have a lease. So more to follow on that, but that is kind of where we're at with our Regional Fire Authority. Any questions from council?
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to say, while Rick's here, I think we've, he and I both have remained committed to the idea that for the general public, they see a truck out there and they really aren't as concerned about who is governing that group as they are about, is that service going to be performed in an Admiral Wayne, I'm going to be taken care of, and so we're committed as a city to make sure that we can continue to support the district through those services that Rick just mentioned. And he and I meet probably at least weekly, it seems like, on various issues, if nothing else, just to check up with things. But it's been a pleasure working with Rick and with members of the RFA, and we are happy to have him here for as long as they want to be here, and wherever they ultimately end up, we'll still remain committed to a relationship that benefits the citizens of this community and the citizens the RFA serves.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And you get to keep it because it's administrative report next.
Yes, couple of items. You just heard the announcement for the Farmer's Market. Again, just to remind folks, it's a wonderful opportunity. That's open again tomorrow from 3:00 to 7:00. This weekend, the, is, one of the Iver's Family Fun and Films events, it'll be at our Henry Moses Aquatic Center because we're going to be showing Finding Dory, so bring your flippers and goggles and enjoy yourself. Tickets are $5, and it starts at 7:00 p.m. Then the, actually, entry in the facilities is 8:00 p.m., and the movie will start at dusk. So I encourage folks to go with this weather. It's a wonderful opportunity to enjoy that facility. I want to also remind folks again about the Renton Loop, the Cruise the Loop event, which will be held on August 19th from 12:00 to 4:00 p.m. Registration is now open, so if you would like to have an entry and participate in actually the actual cruise event, which will be from 4:00 to 5:00, you can register. We'll have lots of entertainment there and food for, if folks just want to stop by, enjoy it, that part of it is, it's free to enter, you can obviously got to pay for your food, but if you want to register for, to have your car in there, those registrations available. If, we are close to finishing up the construction on Main Avenue and South Second, that gateway into the city. If you've driven by there lately, you can tell, so we expect still to have that done in just a, hopefully by the end of next week or certainly by the week following. I want to just mention, we have a number of street construction projects to continue. Obviously, this is a real busy time of year. One in particular, we'll be, we've been working on Rainier Avenue. We're going to have to do some partial lane closures this week, beginning tomorrow in the morning hours from 8:30 to 11:30, so we'll try to hit it, hopefully as the rush hour is ending, but between Victoria, Southwest Victoria and at Hardy Southwest, we'll be doing some work there, so we just want to let folks know. And there are obviously a number of other projects between the city, the state, and others, there's a lot of work going on, so we just always encourage people to please be patient and use caution. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jay. Next, we have two people signed up for audience comment. When I call your name, step up to the podium. Please state your name, city of residence for the record. You have five minutes, and there's a timer right in front. The first is Dale Hoover.
Good evening to all of you council members. Dale Hoover is my name. My address is 613 South 25th Street, 98055. It's Victoria Park on the Talbot Hill location. I've prepared a statement letter I would like to just read to you. The subject matter is car racing. I say, thank you for allowing me a few minutes of this meeting to say how frustrated we are with the weekly racing that has been going on for a very long time. This annoyance has developed into a far greater issue to my family because it has developed into a medical issue. The constant racing of loud engine noise has seeped into our psyche while hoping to fall asleep. It has become impossible because our minds are waiting for the next loud engine noise. I want to thank you, City of Renton, for partaking in the recent multi-city crackdown, but yet again, last night, Friday the 5th, the racing still existed. I took the opportunity to look up city codes regarding speed limits, especially those signs designating no racing zone between certain hours, which I never could understand that. I won't bother to list the exact code numbers because the police already know what they are. I have attended many homeowners' meetings in Victoria Park, when we have had the opportunity to have a representative of the Police Department present to us what and how to have a safe community. The representative always mentioned, if we just see slash hear something, call 911. Well, we have called so many times on weekends, the communications person does not even ask us where the racing is coming from anymore. I challenge the city council to inquire how many racing calls they receive on a Friday or Saturday morning or Sunday morning. That would tell the story of how frustrated the peoples are up on Talbot Hill area. Have we allowed the car races to dictate to the City of Renton to stay out of our way? The police task force that caught some 40 violators, I thanked them, but unfortunately, the raid was only a one-time event. The racers need to be shut down before someone innocent gets hurt in car races, oh, excuse me, gets into a car racer's way, and the innocent could be severely injured or worse yet deceased. Please continue to work as a city defending our citizens from the illegal racing bullies that we have around here, and I thank you for hearing my statement.
Thank you. Next up, we have Eric and Ziba, I can't read it, Wolf.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak here. My name is Eric Wolf. I'm here with my wife, Ziba. We reside at 1801 Jones Avenue Northeast, and this summer, our neighbor has taken an extended vacation. In the meantime, he's converted his home into a duplex and is renting it as a VRBO, vacation rental by owner. I called the Development Services Department and I explained that the city does not have any regulations governing VRBOs, that they're treated similar to long-term rentals, but in this case, while the neighbor's away, we've had disturbances for the last three weekends at our home, late at night. In fact, just last Friday, just this past Friday or Saturday morning, I confronted renters at 1:00 and 2:00 a.m. who were playing basketball in the backyard, followed by a game of billiards on an outdoor pool table. And if you've ever heard pool balls strike each other in the middle of the night, it's kind of shocking, similar to the other gentleman who's waiting for the next sound to occur. So we've had that going on for the past three weeks. I've contacted the management company, it's Turnkey Rentals out of Texas, they're out of Austin, Texas. They are reluctant naturally to bite the hand that feeds them. From my perspective, they're unwilling to rein in their guests and their behavior. We've called the police on a couple occasions, they did respond. The first night I called the police, the renters had actually installed an inflatable pool on the sport court next door to the house and left the water running long enough to fill the pool that the city sent a notice to the neighbor saying, "You've had excessive water usage over the past 24 hours." Neighbor didn't know about it, of course, he's an absentee landlord right now, so he's not there. What this does for me is, leaves me to be the enforcer of policies. My neighbor's not there, the management company doesn't want to do it, the police, who did respond twice, suggested that I address the issue with my neighbor and the management company. So it's gone around in a bit of a circle here, and it's been a challenge for us, and it's been frustrating for my family and myself to sleep on those warm nights with the windows open when there are people next door drinking, smoking, playing basketball, and making general noise over there. As the home prices and mortgages continue to rise in our area, I believe that people will seek to defray those costs with VRBOs. So I would ask the city and the city council to consider enacting some regulations so that a long-term resident, 17 years we've lived in that house, this is the first time we've had an issue like this, and as I mentioned, it's very frustrating not being able to sleep on those nights. I would ask the city to consider enacting some legislation or discussing legislation for these VRBOs, because some of these folks come in and treat it like it's spring break. It's not the same as a long-term rental. The long-term rentals tend to have respect for the people in the neighborhood, the VRBO folks, not so much. So I appreciate the time, thank you, and would ask you to consider that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, you can refer this to the administration, and we'll be happy to provide some background information, then maybe bring it back to Planning and Development Committee.
Yes, thank you, Jay.
You bet.
Does that need a motion?
Does it need a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, that we refer the issue of VRBOs to the administration for, to bring back to the council planning and development committee.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mrs. Witche, to bring the issue of VRBOs
to the administration and then back to the council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I have another question of the gentleman. If I may, I didn't, I don't know if I understood you right when you said that the house next door had been turned into a duplex?
That's correct. There's a separate unit in the front of the home that was once a garage.
We don't know if there was a permit.
Yeah, part of the referral will be, we'll check to see whether or not in fact that was a permitted improvement.
Right, so the past couple of weekends, there have been two different groups of people in the home renting the different apartments.
And if I may address, there's, as I understand, there's no light ordinance either, and the backyard has many lights, and they turn that on to be able to play the basketball, which is at the lower court of the property. And so they leave it on all night, they don't really care, and it shines in our property, and there's no light ordinance. So I would appreciate if you addressed that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the consent agenda, there are 12.
Mr. Mayor? Sorry. I don't think we finished the vote.
Oh, we did, you just, you didn't say, "Motion carries."
Motion carries.
Didn't hear you.
I don't do this every week. Okay, next, we have the consent agenda. We have 12 items for consideration. Is there any that would like to be removed?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prince?
Seeing none, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as published.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next up, we have unfinished business. Ms. Perez?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGurven?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Witche?
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person?
No unfinished business.
Wow. Mr. Prince?
The Committee of the Whole has a committee report.
Hey, Committee of the Whole Committee Report, ordinance amending Rent Municipal Code 66 related to at-large vicious animals. The Committee of the Whole recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to refer the draft ordinance amending Rent Municipal Code Chapter 66 to clarify owners' responsibility to keep animals under control and strengthen penalties for violations. To the Public Safety Committee for review and recommendation to the full council. This is signed by the council president.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince?
I move, the council concur in the recommendation of the plan of the Committee of the Whole Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. Person. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And let's see, the next, we're on to legislation. We have one ordinance. Now we have five ordinances.
Okay, yes, the first ordinance is for, just for first reading. It was approved via committee report back in June 12th, and it's regarding landmark preservation. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending Chapter 4.1 of the Rent Municipal Code by adding a new section 4.1260, landmark preservation, providing for landmark designation and protective services for landmark buildings, sites, districts, structures, and objects, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, the next four ordinances are for second and final reading. The first is docket item for downtown streetscape. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4280D and 4660F of the Rent Municipal Code by amending the downtown business district map, adopting the downtown streetscape design standards and guidelines, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven. All in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
We need, roll call.
Oh.
Roll call.
That's right.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Witche.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Okay. What do I say?
Ordinance carried.
Ordinance carries.
All right, the next ordinance is regarding, it's another docket item, it's refuse and recycling. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 4490C and 4490D of the Rent Municipal Code by amending refuse and recycling deposit areas, collection point requirements, and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven, and this requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Witche.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next ordinance is another docket item, it's regarding the hearing examiner, yeah, just the hearing examiner. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 47070 and 47230 of Chapter 7 subdivision regulations, 4880, 4890, 48100 and 48110 of Chapter 8, permits, general and appeals, and 4920 and 49180 of Chapter 9, permits, specific, and 41160 of Chapter 11, definitions of Title IV development regulations of the city code, amending the regulations related to hearing examiner proceedings, and amending the definition of party of record.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Mr. McGurven, and this requires a roll call.
Hey, Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Witche.
Aye.
Mr. Person, sorry, and Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ordinance carries.
Okay, the final ordinance is also a docket, or is not a docket item, and it's regarding camping and overnight stays in parks. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 298C10 of the city code, revising regulations related to camping and overnight stays in parks, providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Witche.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Witche, seconded by Mr. McGurven, and this requires a roll call.
Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Witche.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
And Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Ordinance carries. Okay, next, we have new business. Ms. Perez.
New business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McGurven.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just need to announce that the Utilities Committee will be meeting on Thursday, August 10th at 3:30 in the afternoon in the council conference room. There are three items on the agenda. Langston 2 Street Vacation Compensation, Highlands 435 Pressure Zone Reservoirs in Maine, CAG 16-103 Amendment, and finally, emerging issues in utilities. That is all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Witche.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two committees to report out. First, at 3:30 PM on Monday, August 14th, the Finance Committee will meet in the council conference room, and there's four items. One, request to convert a mechanic's assistance position to something. And two, request to add a full-time FTE by hiring a maintenance services worker. And two, utility locator. And number three, vouchers. Number four, emerging issues in revenue streams. And secondly, on August 14th at 4:30 PM for Councilman Corman, the Public Safety Committee will meet in the council conference room. We have three topics, ATS agreement for the red light cameras, amending our Rent Municipal Code 10-5 vehicle impoundment, and three, emerging issues in public safety. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Person and Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have two committees to announce. On Thursday, August 10th at 4:00 PM, the Planning and Development Committee will be meeting in the council conference room. We have two items on the agenda, fire impact fees update and emerging issues in CED. And then the Committee of the Whole on August 14th, Monday at 5:30 PM in the Conference Center, we have three items on the agenda, parks, open space and community facilities discussion, regional issues, and economic development update. And that is all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. What's the wish of the council?
Move we adjourn?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Prince, seconded by Ms. Witche. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.